To call this meeting to order. Please, good morning everyone. If you could please stand for the budget allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Lord God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I surrender my life to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the regular meeting agenda.
We have an accessory agenda.
That one?
We have a work session.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my other one.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the work session agenda.
I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion? Just one more favor. All right. Motion carries. And going on to county reports.
The County Commissioners and my reports to the reports there again about the county. As my reports, do you have any questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We started Rosedale Road last week. We've just been out there milling. After today, we'll have almost a mile of road built up. I'm having, I'm not having trouble with the contract that got the bid is having trouble with this hot plants. We're looking, probably not doing any paving out there until after July 4th now, since we have a short week next week. But we still got plenty to do out there to keep us busy. Other than that, it's just business as usual down there.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, thanks. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Just a quick update on the shooting range. It looks like we will be getting that permit finalized after the beginning of fiscal year, so just gotta get a purchase order taken care of and hopefully get that moving so we can start applying for the grants.
And that, make sure that is the 30-year permit, correct?
That is the 30-year permit, yes. So it's been a year and a half in the works, but we're finally-
I'm pretty sure we've been working on that as long as I've been a Commissioner.
Yeah, it's been a while. So looking forward to getting that one buttoned up and move forward with trying to get some of the work done out at the shooting range. The Baton Park, the environmental work was started. There were no cultural requirements. Got the letter from Chipo yesterday. Not a surprise, there's been a lot of work out there and already several surveys done. And the biological groundwork was conducted last week. And as you guys know, Charlene submitted the CBVG application last week. So we'll see how that goes. Tyrone ADA, Colonia, Sodder Miller and Associates are finalizing the bid documents. We should have that bid complete at the same time that we finalize the grant agreement with Colonia. So the idea behind that is that we'll be able to move forward and get the work started prior to getting into the winter season with concrete work out there. Moving that one along. ICIP project summaries were provided to the Commissioners a couple of times. I did receive some input from the County Manager and Directors, and I've reincorporated that. And I think we'll work internally to work on some of the prioritizations and hopefully have that presented to you at the next meeting, first meeting in July. Airport Terminal, we're finalizing the architectural plans. Those are required by the end of this month. And the FAA grant agreements will need to be in place by the end of July. So we're working diligently on that. And I couldn't remember if I had talked about this, but the old detention center Brown built NMED and Southwestern New Mexico Council of Governments received some funding, and that funding will be used to help us conduct the Phase Two. So that's good news for us. And Airport Road, surveys complete. BHI has ordered some core samples, and they are currently working on the plans for Airport Road. Those are some of the highlights of what we've got going on. Stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do, do we have any involvement in what's happening with the head over water situation?
So we-
I mean, I know we gave them some emergency funds, but what's, just tell us what you know about that, and is the county involved in that at all?
So Prusso is handling that through the Southwestern New Mexico Council of Governments. She needed the resolution that you guys approved for the emergency declaration. And from what I understand from her is what they're trying to get is some emergency funding to help the Water Association recoup some of the funds that they've had to expend so far. I do understand that they've had some work done on the wells, and it does sound like they've got one of the wells backed up and running. So they got a driller out there that was able to pull the pump and get some work done on that. The current cost is just for reimbursement of what they've had to spend so far. I do believe that she intends to try to get some additional funding to do more of a hydrologic survey prior to determining what they need to do next. Because this has kind of been a constant issue.
Well, there was an article in the paper about the work that was actually done, and they're not being able to pull the pump because where the electrical panel was, and you know, some, some misengineering or whatever. Was the county involved in any of that at all? That's not a county-
No.
A county issue?
No. They're a mutual domestic water association.
So they're their own quasi-government governmental entity?
Correct.
Okay.
And as far as I know, I don't want to say all of it, I think at least almost all of the mutual domestic water associations always work with the Council of Governments when they get started and when they do any funding applications, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, Felicia. The funding for the Airport Road, was that on Baxter's [inaudible]?
The funding for the Airport Road is the GOV.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that Grant County was selected, last year in the legislative session, there was a $2.5 million appropriation that was made to HSD, the Behavioral Health Division, for, to look at behavioral health issues in jails, primarily rural and frontier communities. Grant County was selected to submit an application as a pilot program. It's called an intervention demonstration project. And the goal is to work towards reducing their cynicism, and especially those who have behavioral health issues. This aligns with the efforts we've been working on through stepping up, and that's actually one of the criteria is they want you to be able, to be utilizing the sequential intercept model, and then working with resources that you have within your community to, to reduce those particular individuals coming back into your jails. So we were selected as a, one of eight counties to submit a plan. It's a very tight timeframe, but I will do my best to get it done. So we have to submit a notice to participate by Friday, and then I have to have a 20-page plan written and submitted by July the 19th. But I think it would be really beneficial for us to participate in this, is it's, it's a pilot, and it could possibly lead to future funding if we're successful. And we already are doing a lot of the things that are outlined with our partnership with HMS, with Tupacca, CareLinks, and there are other Bridges to Care, is that what it is? Bridges to Care? So anyways, I just wanted to let you know, I found that out last week while we were at conference, that we were actually selected to do that. And it's based on stops from the jail, as well as data like overdose rates, suicide rates, mortality, those sort of things for our county. So we'll be working actively on that. That's all I have.
No other county reports? Okay. Next item is purpose and public input. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grand County Board Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the Department of Defense and other elected officials to communicate with the Commissioners in regards to matters in respect of departments. In accordance with Grand County Resolution Number R-19-01, we welcome public input limited to agenda items only, and will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone for public input?
He's actually on the agenda. He's on the agenda.
He's on the agenda, correct. Mr. Price, you're, you're on, gonna be on the agenda, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Do we have anyone else for public input? Okay, thank you. Next item is presentation of reports. Item A, discussion regarding work financial plan, cooperative services agreement.
My name is Keel Price.
There's a quiet button there if you push on the microphone.
Did I do it?
Yes.
I did, I hear myself. I have some water here, my throat tends to dry out pretty bad. I don't seem to be able to, more than speak for very long, I might have to take some of that. I stand before you today as a, as a Grand County taxpayer, but more importantly, I am a retired district supervisor for Wildlife Services, and retired for one of the five Few weeks back, I was asked to go to Dunleavy County and speak on behalf of the field man for, for Dunleavy County. And with some reluctance after being retired, I went into the office and then gathered up the information I needed and made that meeting. There's a new supervisor, I've tried that for about five years, and he didn't come out of Wildlife Services, came from another agency, so as usual, there's a long one, and it's a long one. The management information system devised by the federal government is very comprehensive. It's also very difficult to draw a report of meaning. And his report for Dunleavy County, and for this county, was beyond being just incomplete. It wasn't his fault, hard system to pull information from. I spent most of my career, especially after I couldn't earn my keep in the field anymore, and came wildlife biologist for USDA and District Supervisor, had the privilege of talking to New Mexico, and being District Supervisor for the Southern District of Counties. Probably the biggest thing I've ever had to repeatedly address are well-meaning wildlife activists that have a tendency to manufacture malignance about my agency and the people who work for it. And when we had a county with that incomplete information, they, shall we say, figures don't lie, but liars figure. And with incomplete information, they fill in the wrong instances completely. I see the same thing that's happened around in Grand County. And you were told that my field man makes $82 an hour, or $82,000 a year. I can assure you, as GS 12, I didn't make $82,000 a year, and Brandon [inaudible] $86. So you might imagine there's some distance between your salary, your costs to this county, and those that were presented to the county managers. I pulled up this complete report, want some help, a little rusty on this sort of thing, and I can see clearly that Brandon put in, for the last full year recording, we have this FY 2018, Brandon put in 2,497 hours in Grand County. And when I does the math, those 52 weeks will give you 2,080. So he put in substantially more time than was even required of him. And ultimately, if you decide to break this contract, this 50% funded contract for our services, which are incidentally mandated by Congress that we offer that service to counties, you will have people taking wildlife management into their own hands. After I came to Los Cruces, I noticed even in an urban setting, I could address pigeon problems, say at schools, or even the airport. And as I talked to those folks, I've had them tell me that they tried to handle the pigeon problem with going for poison and the like. And incidentally, they'll mention to me that perhaps they had some raptors that was helping them out, but they don't know what happened to those raptors. When I tell them, they poisoned those pigeons, they became sick, and birds of prey came in and fed them, and those pigeons ended up killed, and the birds of prey. The same thing and worse happens in rural settings. A rancher or a farmer's entire living depends on whether or not his product, whether it's livestock, or grain, or what be it, falls prey to some kind of a degradation. Most of the land that is private has a lock gate. No one has access, no one knows what they're doing in there. Unfortunately, I do. The strip mine bakes, incidentally, of, of, even bald eagles in the night. If they're falling prey to loss to those critters, you can only sustain so much loss, and you must address it. Before I became a wildlife biologist, and sat at a desk, and I had a computer, I was a field man in Arizona. And probably the biggest deal that I think you can relate to that I dealt with as a field man, is about once in every decade, they would call all the field men from all the counties, and we would address problems in Farnell County, or Cochise County involving the fox veered event of rabies. All this would go in, and we would knock down the entire population as best we could for a few weeks. And in almost that hit, that I record, probably 15, never once did that fox veered or rabies outbreak leave the state of Arizona, till a few years ago. 1998, some new voters went ahead and passed an anti-trapping law in Arizona, as they don't in many other states. And we always honor that. And you pass a law as a state, we don't give lego traps in Ohio. Lego traps, you'll be told, the axis of cruelty, and they don't have anything to do with cruelty at all. It's a wildlife management tool. If you have a wildlife management tool, you will have a managed wildlife. And someone will deal with it legally, or illegally, one way or the other. Legal permission. I'm close, with a coat from a friend of mine, George Neberg, was a ranger in Sierra County. Hopefully I can find this right quick, there it is. Today, as I write this, there are politicians in power who absolutely, who know absolutely that they have done wrong to remain in power. They have purposely, purposely catered to the populist majority, urban vote, instead of doing what is right for the minority of people who live in rural areas of our counties. You have any questions, I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
Mr. Chairman, I have some statements and questions, so. So for those that might be watching this on TV and don't know what it's about, we've been regularly, almost monthly approached by specifically one citizen who has a beef with Wildlife Services, which is services offered through the United States Department of Agriculture, through Avis, to help with things from squirrels, which you wouldn't think was much of a problem until one of them chews up the wiring harness in your car and costs $800 to $1,200 to get it repaired. Pigeons, which tend to roost on the roofs of buildings in apartment complexes, especially in one case where I'm familiar with, in and around air conditioning systems. They carry diseases which are spread to humans, and that can be airborne. So they're, you picture pigeons nesting next to an air conditioner, they can get some drips of water up there, it's just a perfect place for them to nest. They have diseases that are carried through the air conditioning system, just sucked right into residences of unsuspecting tenants in these complexes. And you talk about the spread of serious disease, and I could go on and on, you mentioned rabies, yeah, give us some more of your-
You're talking about syphilis. Syphilis is a chronic disease, and you're absolutely right. In New Mexico, it's an arid state, you don't normally have a problem unless it's artificially hydrated in some easy swampers. And like you said, whether it's a restaurant, or a school, or even possibly this building, mostly evaporate coolers, not draw pigeons. And they just hang out there, they don't have to nest, and that fecal matter gets a fungus in it. And you're absolutely right, one air conditioner kicks on, it spreads that spore throughout the building. First time I addressed syphilis was in Washington State, and I had several people working for me, usually 14, 15, 16. And as a matter of necessity, we tested, but tested my employees, and three of them actually had syphilis from addressing pigeon problems. And you pretty well have that, that disease for life. It's a semi-serious, and it's, is a real problem, and can or has been a problem. And unknown, if you don't test for syphilis, you don't know that all of your respiratory problems and whatnot has a place. I'm going to do.
Okay. Well, this is, this is just the type of things that Mr. Jones, Brandon Jones deals with, Wildlife Services. You know, there's scunks, you mentioned fox and rabies, and a lot of what we've been approached with is, is trapping of domestic animals. We've been given a lot of false information. I've tried to, as best as I can, address some of that for the Commissioners. I hope the, I think the information I've given is accurate, and I hope it is. You said that this is a 50% funded contract, so the USDA, I'm guessing, gives the other 50%?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's federally funded. It has been for many decades, that's the reason for it.
To be clear, the person who speaks monthly against Wildlife Services, the base of Paul State and so on, I want to clarify some of those. This is really flow-through money, it's Taylor Act grazing money, it's not Southern County taxpayer money.
Right.
So this money comes from grazing leases, basically, and then, but it not only benefits ranchers who pay grazing leases, it benefits people in town. I'm familiar with, vaguely familiar with woodpecker problem, the lady, maybe Brandon can address this better if he knows about it, but I heard that a citizen, an elderly lady in town had a woodpecker problem that was, ran into the, I, my understanding was over $10,000.
Yes.
And my understanding was that citizens can't deal with woodpeckers, really legal exception?
No, they don't protect, none of the mandatory or treaty act.
So.
We have an agreement with Fish and Wildlife Service.
So we really need someone to come in and help us with that, because you go shooting woodpeckers more-
It's called drumming, it's a mating thing. They come in and drum on things, but especially those that'll make a lot of noise, like a metal chimney or something like that, but frequently, if they just get up on the side of the house, you're right, they can do untold damage to that house.
And one of, Randy's up here, I don't know if anybody from the county knows the damage that's been done to our fire department in the Staco, has anyone seen that, up on Ellis Mason? Are you familiar with that, Mr. Jones? Have you seen that damage?
Yeah, about $10,000.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was told by Assistant Chief, or I'm not sure what his position is, that there's been significant damage done up there by woodpeckers. And it's, it's just hard for us to deal with these things. I think the $25,000 that we're going to spend, not of Grand County taxpayer money, but of this flow-through money.
Our own range improvement, honestly.
Yeah, I think it's well spent with Wildlife Services, so that's the point I want to make. I want to thank you for, for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
Helped the Commissioners, if they have any questions, we'll ask them.
You have any questions?
I apologize for arriving late, got here as soon as advanced, get me here. The woodpecker example seems like a really good one. Do you, are you able to deal with that problem using non-lethal methods, since they're protected species?
Yes, you can, the first attempt and the first consideration is always non-lethal. Unfortunately, a large percentage of instances does fail. You've probably, I haven't looked around your town, in Los Cruces, almost every town has an epti, hornball. And I smile when I laugh, but believe it or not, they work for their while. But even the smallest waring bird can only expend so much energy fleeing a false threat. And they figured out, and before you know what they're sitting the twin horns and pooping on your ephigy. If you work real hard, and you get scary eye balloons, you get CD discs, you get a snake ephigy, and you move them around, and you remove one of them and replace it with a different one, and you continually devote a lot of hours, you can be successful. But at some point in time, if you've already solved a problem in many instances, lethals. And a lot of people tell you lethal doesn't work. If lethal doesn't work, you didn't kill- If lethal doesn't work, you didn't kill enough of them. It's just as simple as that. Dead birds, dead critters do not damage property. It is a final effort to resolve these problems, but it's an effort that, as I stated earlier, is going to be made by somebody at some point. It may as well be regulated. It may as well be addressed by someone like, like Mr. Jones, who is required to go through all kinds of untold training by the federal government. He's a certified applicator for pesticides in LA. Several other things that he has to spend a lot of time reporting on and training, whether it's firearms, any of the pesticides that we use. And then it's open. People know what we do, why we do it, and when we do it. April in the stronghold, well, I took my first wildlife analysis job was writing legal documents in Western Washington. And that is a very progressive area. And those folks were the same way. They didn't want us to kill a coyote, was killing calves the other side of the state. I was referred to one side as the soggy side and the other as the crispy side. And the understanding of what needed to be done didn't exist until they had a Canada goose problem. When they built the John Day Dam, some of the southern dams on Columbia, they gathered up a few eggs from nests that was in that area that were going to flood and put them in an ideal environment in Seattle area. And the geese frapped and they didn't have to migrate anymore. And all of these hundreds of miles of beachfront, whether it was on the interior lakes or on the saltwater, became excellent habitat with no predators whatsoever on low grasses and they flourished. And before you know it, all of these extremely liberal people, wealthy people, that spent money trying to stop the ranchers on the other side of the state from killing coyotes, wanted those geese dead. And my first environmental assessment was worthless Canada geese. And as a result of a court ruling, we were challenged. We were allowed to go ahead and address that problem and get it very effectively. Again, that's the unpopular taking of life of wildlife, beautiful wildlife, that we love and respect just like anyone else. It's going to get done and it should be done properly and it should be done humanly and it should be done in a latter day so that all the residents are aware of what's happening and why some will still disapprove, and I understand that. But it's a necessity for solving the problem in the long run.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I didn't tell them again yesterday. I'm very happy we don't have a Canada geese problem here because I've dealt with it when I am.
Yes.
But about the woodpeckers, are you allowed to kill a species that's listed like that?
As a result of my environmental assessment, which was challenged in federal court, yes, we get a permit to take migratory birds. That permit in Seattle area was for thirty-five hundred Canada geese. And we fill that, obviously. But their beaches were not usable. Their decks and boats and things were not usable. Their lawns were killed. It was a pretty severe, I mean, it involved millions of dollars in damage. The same person that did what the coyote killed, certainly one of those geese killed. And they were doing it themselves if there wasn't any other avenue of addressing the problem. And it gives my agency a black eye. Most people today, mind children. They were growing up, watched cartoons and they depicted traveling, there's muckle-doggy and meanderthals, which that stays with you the rest of your life. Much of the education and people that think they know a lot about wildlife, learned it on the Disney Channel or the Wildlife Channel or whatever, you know. They're not unreasonable people for the most part. They're just misinformed as to some things that are necessarily controlled. The lethal take and managing wildlife in a, like I said, in an environment that is in broad daylight, the scientific concerns.
Mr. Chairman? Specifically, Mr. Brown, we discussed Grant County pigeon problems. Were you here on that discussion?
I talked to him as he said pigeon.
Okay. And woodpeckers. I mentioned squirrels earlier, which can you get car harnesses?
I think I got my answer that even with a permit, he is allowed to.
Yes, I do.
That was my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen.
Did you, any other questions? No, thanks.
Again, I thank you for your time. Appreciate you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Manager Webb. When is this going to come up, the contract? Oh, Thursday. Okay.
No, I do. Can I change my last question? Mr. Price, the report that you were talking about, that you managed to extract because of your years of experience, would you mind sharing that with the commission?
I'm retired and I don't have the authority to do that. I'm sure if you would give Mr. Parker a little help and get this report. And it's a difficult one to read, federal. But yes, I was, he will take the time to convince, and I'll give him this little briefing, what needs to be addressed and what needs to be shared with the county that I'm sure he'll do that. Thank you so much. From what I understand, I haven't the authority anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? So moving on to the next item is review, June 27, 2019, regular meeting agenda.
First item on your agenda is to recognize the Culberry High School Lady Indian softball state championship team. You'll present them with a proclamation. Moving down to financial reports, item D, consideration of June 20, 2019 expenditure report. Brandon, would you go through the highlights of that, please?
Yes, good one. In your package, you have the expenditure report dated June 20 for a total sum of three million eight hundred and four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Other amounts are the consumer accounts payable, three million two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents, and three pay periods consisting of six hundred and three thousand dollars. And some of the major expenses we incurred during this period, bear with me, this is kind of only the west, for the console and annual expenses, and we're getting close to the end of this year. We have O'Hanlon Houston for eleven thousand eight hundred for progress building for the upper member's storage tank. Field center class of twenty-one thousand one hundred for off-road fuel for the road equipment. Southwest concrete dealing for fourteen thousand six hundred for top mix for road projects. Southwest Hollow West Authority for forty-nine thousand six hundred for the tipping fees for April. Red Express fleet services for twenty-four thousand five hundred for the April twenty nineteen fuel charges for our regular fleet. Ascend Aviation for nineteen thousand nine hundred for jet fuel purchase. City of Bay area for thirteen thousand five hundred for the North Hurley base station maintenance. Tana Technologies in the amount of four thousand for software renewals for our aero traffic and system management. O'Hanlon Houston for eleven thousand four hundred for progress building for Van Gogh Drive and Cardassian Road Projects. The Global Group for two hundred and fifty thousand, this is for security electronics upgrades at the detention center. O'Hanlon Houston for nineteen thousand seven hundred for progress building for the North Hurley Road Phase Two project. Sacagawea Construction for thirty-three thousand one hundred, this is progress building for the Whiskey Creek Station Division. SkyWest Media for twenty-four thousand eight hundred, website development. Southern Food Service, two hundred and one thousand five hundred for April twenty-nineteen meals and medical snacks. Pocket of Educational Services for two hundred and fifty-two thousand, this is progress building for the courthouse roof repairs, and we're using the red cone as the contractor. Southern Miller and Associates for twenty-seven thousand seven hundred, progress building for the Rosel Road Phase Two engineering improvements. BioCore Health Strategies, fifty-one thousand four hundred, this is for main to eighteen medical management services. Eight fourteen solutions in the amount of ten thousand three hundred, this is V C N for the Sarajevo water fire station. J and S Plumbing for fourteen thousand eight hundred, this is connecting water supply to the Ellis Mesa fire station for the police office, pardon, the water fire department. Ascend Aviation, twenty-one thousand six hundred for another jet fuel purchase. Regional Medical Center for thirty-seven thousand four hundred for the February and April twenty-nineteen injury claims. Ascend Aviation, nineteen thousand five hundred for another jet fuel purchase. Pocket of Educational Services, eleven thousand seven hundred for progress building on the courthouse roof repairs. Hallmark Construction Company, one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred, progress building for a security wall and door project at the Department of Health, which is over the Sosa Street complex. Caterpillar National Services, the amount of eleven thousand five hundred, this is the June twenty-nineteen moves for the road equipment. Ascend Aviation, thirty thousand six hundred jet fuel purchase. The County Manager's Office, thirty-seven thousand three hundred. This is a reimbursement from Cogitaminos funds for February, March, and April twenty-nineteen for operating expenses and labor. O'Hanlon Houston, eleven thousand two hundred progress building for the North Hurley Rainage Project and Holland Frontier Refining Marketing, forty-six hundred for chip sale oil for road projects. That was the amount. Any questions?
Oh, I think we got another page there. Seven hundred and eight?
Okay, continue on. O'Hanlon Houston, thirteen thousand five hundred for progress building for the parcel map correction project. Ascend Aviation, eighteen thousand two hundred for another jet fuel purchase. David Alverki, two hundred and forty-five thousand for debt service for the GRG regular bonds, series twenty-fourteen. New Mexico Fire, seventy-one thousand one hundred for the fire building for the South Creek SUVA building station project. Red Express, twenty-six thousand one hundred for main to nineteen fuel charges. New Mexico Human Services Department, one hundred thousand for the fourth quarter safety and care pool payment. And the last amount, these corporate educational services, thirty-five thousand nine hundred for a muck and monster replacement for the maintenance department.
Yeah, I wanted to hear you say that.
I didn't think I wrote the muck and monster. It's got to explain the... Apparently, according to Jake, it has to do something with our sewer, our sewer line. I don't know why you call it a muck and monster. I thought we were going into business.
What's a muck and monster?
It has something to do with the sewer line.
Yeah, something with our sewer system and connection and all this stuff. I don't know.
Commissioner, Chairman Fisher, Billings, it's kind of a grinder that's used on the sewer system. So that's why I wanted to hear that.
A grinder that's used on the sewer system? They got to clear the stuff up.
That's almost as bad as a muck and monster. So the grinder creates mucks.
So, yeah, what I understand is when certain things go down, they have to be ground up before they can continue.
Right. Wow.
Stay around. I have one for Shauna, I think. The progress building on the courthouse roof repairs, did we use up the old bond on that one? Awesome. Done with that one.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Moving on to new business, item E, consideration of GRMC Board of Trustees. Those are uploaded into notice. I think you have eleven total. I'll open that discussion up for you all as to how you wish to proceed with that process. Their term's due in July 31st, so...
So we need to appoint no later than the last meeting in July.
Correct.
I thought they did it June 30th.
Well, the term ends June 30th, but the first meeting is...
No, their term ends July.
Okay.
So the term ends July 30th and...
July 31st.
Appointed for interest is the co-royal first.
Correct. So you do need to appoint them the last meeting of July. That was the timeframe that we worked out, but when we advertised their positions, so you have plenty of time to review.
What are your wishes of these? Any discussion as to how we should proceed with this or...
So when we did this last year, what we did was, Harry or Billy, I don't know, at any point, what we did was each commissioner individually ranked all the applicants and then we decided on a cutoff for interviews. So I don't remember how many applicants we had last year, so I'm just, these numbers are...
Thirteen.
So we, as I recall, we took the top five and interviewed them in a commission meeting in public. So they had, we created a set of questions and a person was given a certain amount of time to introduce themselves and tell us about themselves. And then we had, as I recall, a set of five questions that we asked each person and then we had discussion and then we voted. I'm just saying that's how we did it last year. And Harry, as I recall, helped with the ranking because you have math skills the rest of the summer.
Now, I'm not recalling. That was two years ago that I did that. In last year, we decided that that should be a staff function. There was some discussion of whether, whether it was appropriate for one of the commissioners to do it. And that makes sense to me that we would send that to a staff member.
And I'm pretty sure you did do that last year. I remember the conversation. So I think you did do that last year.
Yes, that is correct. I think burned out. Did you tell me?
Yeah.
Seems to agree.
I can never see burned out. She sits behind the corner of the desk there. So my thought would be that we rank all of the applicants and then we would have to decide on a cutoff. And last year, we appointed two, so we may want to think about a larger cutoff since we're appointing three this time. And then we would have to decide, you know, how and when we're going to do the questions and what date we want them to appear before the commission, who want, I think, to think about whether we want to have the interviews, a kind of work session and have a couple days to think about it and vote, you know, on the regular session, that sort of stuff.
Well, being that we have two meetings now, probably, I think my idea would have them on the first meeting.
Of the month.
Of the month, and then that gives us plenty of time to know what they've said too, where we can make our selections on the last meeting or the month that that will work. But I'm hoping to do any...
And does it matter to you whether it's the work session or the regular session in July? So this would be a special request. I will be on vacation, get my two week school vacation, and it will take the first half of July. And the way my schedule works out, the Tuesday, I could call in and hear you. On Thursday, I'll be traveling, public transportation, and it might be difficult to hear. So if we're going to follow that, I'd request that we do it July 9.
On the work session.
On the work session.
And I think it's important that all of us are, you know, are just...
So that brings up, I will miss the July 23rd work session and will not be available to call in on that day, so...
But we would be appointing during the... But we would be appointing during the regular session, so you'll be available on the twenty-third, right?
Right, but I would, if we had any discussion during the work session on the twenty-third, I will not be able to participate. So I would actually ask that we do all of our discussion then on the ninth, and not discuss it on the twenty-third. Because I won't get to hear that discussion. I will not be able to hear that discussion.
You want to discuss about the twenty-fifth, if there was any?
Right.
Right, we'll discuss it on the twenty-fifth, but...
Yeah, so we were looking at July ninth, and then any further discussion on July twenty-fifth. Is that what's true? I'm good with that, if, uh, anything.
So, so we would actually, uh, have the candidates interview on the ninth, and have whatever discussion we want to have then, and then any further discussion would be on the twenty-fifth, one would, uh, get a vote.
And since you're doing a, a timeframe, uh, what is our timeframe for getting names to Bernadette, so she can calculate our top X candidates to schedule for the ninth?
Bernadette has someone say?
Um, if you're trying to figure this out, I just want to be clarified with the teacher for her doing currently. Um, it's one physician position and one, I think, two, two, it's a...
It's three, three total.
Okay, sorry.
And of those three, how many have to be physicians?
There's no, there's, it's suggested that of the nine, uh, seven, excuse me, board members, two are physicians, but there's nothing binding about that.
Just a suggestion. And I think that's a relevant conversation, since, since it came up, the Board of Trustees in their bylaws, I think, suggests to us, as correctly stated by Commissioner Edwards, that there be two physicians, right?
Correct.
But that's not necessarily something that we're bound by. The Hospital Funding Act, uh, gives authority to the commission to, uh, appoint the trustees, and there's no stipulations that there has to be so many physicians. Also, the, um, stipulation of the hospital employee is a request basically to the bylaws that have never been ratified, in my understanding, by the commission, that, that, uh, one of the trustees could, or cannot be a hos- an employee of the hospital. And I think that's come up, so I think that's also a request, uh, I don't think the commission's bound by that.
I think you got here correct.
Okay, thank you.
These suggestions.
So if we, um, uh, so we would, how much time do we, I mean, we're gonna work backwards from July ninth, so how much time would we want to give the candidates to prepare? So the ninth follows the Fourth of July weekend, correct? So I'm trying to figure out, um, so the amount of time we want to give them to prepare would determine when we would want to have names to Bernadette, and have Bernadette have the ranking finished, and inform them that they're gonna be interviewed. And today's the twenty-fifth, so, uh, I'm not looking at a calendar, but if we, if, is it possible for the commissioners to have, uh, the rank? Oh, right. I want to look at you, I'm sorry. Yep, you're on. Thank you. Uh, is it, would it be possible for, um, the commissioners to have the candidates ranked by Thursday, by the Thursday meeting? I'm asking you guys that.
I can do that.
My question is, is this could be this, could this be considered a personnel matter that we could discuss in closed session?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Solis knows.
So all discussions on what we feel, and the reason I ask is because this is new to me, and I probably, you know, need some education on that.
Commissioner Solis, the three of us stumbled through that first time also, and it was not pretty. I'll just tell you.
I still share your frustration, but that's, the advice we have is no, it's not, it, it has to be done in an open session.
And I think the credibility of the final decision is enhanced by the fact that we have a discussion in the open session, and it's not a closed-room sort of deal. So I'm unhappy with that. It is difficult sometimes. Uh, I try to emphasize positives and ignore negatives when we're having this discussion.
Well, in going through the list of applicants, you know, I have some good applicants, and, but since you are, have been through this, and you have more knowledge of what's necessary to be on the trustees, you know, I would really value an open discussion with you guys, so that I could make the decision. I know some of these names, but not all of them.
Well, same here. Uh, there was one further request, I think, sent from the Board of Trustees, and that was that, uh, this was made along the lines of it'd be nice if, uh, there was some government experience. Uh, but I think you all got that communication from the Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Yes, I like it.
You did, um...
So...
Commissioner, just a point on the line, I just, sorry, I just had a question, I want to make sure, make sure I understand. Are you talking about narrowing the candidates?
Well, we're getting, we haven't gotten there.
Okay.
But yes.
I would read as a, a vote for, as soon as should be, the narrowing piece should be out here.
Yeah.
Right.
I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah.
But that doesn't preclude us sending Bernadette our names, right? What you just said does not preclude the process we discussed.
Right, my concern with that tallying piece was that a commission is doing it, so...
And I think you told me about that, and I agree, that we do this in front of public, so the Thursday meeting, I think, if Bernadette sees one...
So if we're gonna do the narrowing on Thursday, then we would have to have the names, our list of names to Bernadette sometime tomorrow, for her to do the ranking. So the question is, I think, before us is, is it possible for each person up here to get the rankings to Bernadette by, how much time do you need, Bernadette? Would a couple hours be sufficient? Like, if we had the names to you by three o'clock tomorrow, could you have them for us at nine o'clock on Thursday?
Yes, I should, yeah. I'm ready to do that.
And we're looking at...
So you'd have to have it to them by Thursday.
And we're looking at five names from these commissioners, is that what we're discussing?
We ranked the whole list.
The whole list, yeah.
The reason being that someone's number eight, the fact that they're number eight and not number ten on one person's list could affect the final list of six, or whatever we're gonna come up with. So it is helpful, as the person tallied in one year, if you'll do all of the candidates and not just the top five.
We did have a problem with that.
That makes sense.
We had a problem with that, so one, one commissioner didn't... We had a lot of fussing up here about it.
I was looking to a discussion before I ranked, because maybe I'm not clear on what we need in a trustee.
Well, that's, yeah.
So, you know, I, I would hate to rank people on, on just my personal knowledge of them, rather than, uh, the qualities that we need as a trustee.
Yeah, I see you...
There's names that I see here...
As it happens, there are two, we've, uh, so we have the resume, um, but, so, so it's a timeline, so...
Well, if it's my vacation that's messing things up, uh, then we should not be so polite to me. Uh, we could potentially, uh, have the discussion now and Thursday, turn in names by, let's say, the, you know, the first of July, the fifth of July, something like that, and do the narrowing at the first July meeting. And then they come, get interviewed at the work session that you can be part of.
The ninth?
No, that would be then the twenty-third.
The twenty-third, the work session, I will not be present there.
Right. And then the vote would be the twenty-fifth, when you could be present.
But I will hear the interviews. So I, I have a, um, uh, an H K H C training obligation on the twenty-third that I cannot miss, and that means I cannot listen in on the conversation.
Well, we could probably have, I hate to mention this, but a special meeting.
Special session, which is two regulars a month to avoid that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, we could just say that it's all Harry and Alicia's fault, and we don't...
No, I, I think it's our fault, it's our idea that, so we make sure that we, we, we do carefully look at what we need to, and have discussions, and between special meeting would be out of question for something like this.
So some of these candidates have contacted me, some of whom I already know, and some of them I don't know. I think, I think I'd like enough time to, to have a discussion with them, at least over the phone.
And so what, what would that mean? I couldn't tell, the Chair said it would be out of the question, or would be a possibility to do a special?
I, I think because of what we're, we need to do, and, I'm the same way as Commissioner Billings, I mean, that, I know some who, I don't know some who, and I'm just trying to be fair with everybody, and, and I look at things, so I think if we need to go have a special meeting, I, I will be for that.
And I'm okay with that as well.
You know, that way we can look at it and discuss what we have to, and, and, you know, hopefully we make the right decision.
So what we could do, um, is if we, if we said that we would have the names to Bernadette by three o'clock on July eighth, then, uh, the narrowing would happen at the work session on July ninth, which you would be able to hear, is that correct?
Uh, I can hear that, but if it's an action to narrow candidates, then we can't do it at the work session, correct? Unless we co-schedule a special meeting and the work session, which we could do.
That would probably be good. I mean, we're gonna be here anyway, so...
That works for me.
Yes, so we would just have a, a five-minute special meeting to actually take the action,
is that how that would work? Okay.
That's great.
And that's a good idea, so she'll actually buy the clerk, so she can still get the minutes and the clerk has enough to handle.
Okay, so then, so then, uh, we get the names to Bernadette, I'm working this out out loud. We get the names to Bernadette by three o'clock on the eighth, she has them for us by nine o'clock on the ninth, we do a little special meeting to do the narrowing, then, um, we could have a special meeting then the week of the fifteenth, which would, um, be the interview process, and then we'd have, from then until July twenty-fifth, to mull over what we heard and make a decision. Does that seem doable to everybody?
To me, it does.
I just want to be very careful, because I know that this is gonna be very important and critical to our hospital, and to us, because it is basically the management of the hospital. And with all the rhetoric that's been going around, I want to make sure that, that we get the best possible candidates out there.
As long as the meeting on the week of the fifteenth is actually on the eighteenth or the nineteenth, then yes, that works for me. My original schedule was to get back for the July regular meeting, uh, on the eighteenth.
The fifteenth or what?
No, the eighteenth or the nineteenth.
Right.
So it would be my preference to do it on a Thursday.
Now, if it's Thursday...
That would be the interviews, correct?
Yes. Now, you, you were planning to be back in time for the meeting, so you could do a three o'clock meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
So then, what I'm hearing is...
Should we have it at one in the morning?
No, I'm traveling Wednesday. I'm, I'm back Wednesday night.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we have our rankings to Bernadette July eighth by three P M. That the interviews take place on July eighteenth.
The narrowing would happen on the...
The narrowing would happen on the ninth. That would be a special meeting, correct?
A special meeting that coincides with our work session.
Right. So three P M July eighth, rankings to Bernadette, July ninth, special, uh, a special meeting after the work session for the narrowing, correct? July eighteenth, do the interviews, and then July twenty-fifth, that are regular meeting, we take action.
That sounds great, but one question, which is that if we schedule it for after the work session, I'm not sure how we give public notice. Do we have to say a, a set time for a special session?
Actually, the past weekend before the work session.
That allows us to, I think for that very reason, I think that's right.
Before.
So we say nine o'clock, and then the public can know it's nine o'clock, and then the work session... And then we say work session's nine-thirty, just so there's no question.
I understand.
Or just immediately...
Because it's a work session, it's not as important, yes.
But will we have any discussion on the candidates before July eighth, when then we have to have our rankings to Bernadette? See, that's what I'm concerned about. I want to hear your opinions on that.
I think what, maybe what we can have, and it could be now or, or Thursday, is a discussion about what the priorities are for the positions, but I'm, I'm feeling like we wouldn't be discussing specific candidates yet, that is my inclination, because some people haven't interviewed some of the candidates, and we haven't done the narrowing, although I can see developments in discussing the candidates before the narrowing. What we've done in the past is discuss what we want out of that position before the narrowing.
Right.
But that doesn't mean we have to follow that this time.
And generally, it's still, like, to, you know, look a little bit more, and maybe meet with a couple that are not really, you know, much about it.
So one thing we could also do is, um, uh, the Chair could, uh, email the Chair of the Board of Trustees, and ask them to have, uh, to give us a list of their priorities prior to Thursday.
For the position, you mean?
Mm-hmm, for the trustees.
What, what, what qualities they want, not their priorities in terms of the applicants.
Right, what qualities, excuse me, what qualities they're, they're interested in for the trustees.
We've received some of that from the Chair of the Board already.
But, but we haven't, and made a formal request to the Chair for that.
Right, I'm seeing that.
And why does that remind me why that has to be by Thursday? I said that, but I don't know why I said it. Oh, so that we could discuss it on Thursday, I'm sorry, so that we could discuss the candidates on Thursday.
Okay. So I want to know if our, if our intention is to discuss the candidates or the positions?
The positions, I think the positions, right?
The position, not the candidate.
Does that meet your desire?
Because then what you would have to do is make an individual determination on whether the candidates go...
See, I, I know that I can read this, and just by what they've put down on their applications, I can make some determinations on who I think are the best, but there may be candidates that you know personally, that you say, hey, this is really gonna be a good candidate, and I don't see why not, why we can't discuss those before we narrow.
That could happen in the special meeting before we do the narrowing.
Which, which would then make Bernadette's work obsolete, or impossible, one or the other, right? If she does a ranking and then remix it, will we send her back to a room to recalculate? I don't think that's viable.
Yep. Talking this one's...
If you're out here, you can retaliate out here, retaliate if you guys...
And we did do that, as I recall. Why, Chair?
So we, we did a, we did a return?
We really had a team.
I have a rough idea already, but, uh, I, I could give my five right now, but I just want to, I just think this is such a critical decision, I, I don't, I want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing.
Well, the process that I'll use to narrow with what's been said is, uh, you know, call trusted people you know, uh, hey, do you know so-and-so candidate? What's your experience? It may be a doctor that you trust, it may be a trustee that you trust, some other community member, ask about him if you don't know one, uh...
It's also a great time to call them and introduce yourself and have a one-on-one conversation.
Yeah, there's about three or four of them I want to, I'd like to actually sit down with between now and then.
And then those are my ones here to offer, probably recharge a few that I'm sitting out with and I'm gonna talk to them.
Because I, in looking at some of the preferences that the, the current board has, you know, so there's distinct qualities that different candidates would bring, so that's, that's what I'm, I'm probably gonna do the same, make some phone calls.
Well, and I would, I would also just say that, um, you know, I think this isn't... Well, and I would, I would also just say that, you know, I think this isn't, to me, I'm speaking for myself only, having now done this, this will be the third time that I've been through this process. And to me, my decision on how I rank them and how I'm interested in the candidates is a more broad look at what their capacity is. So in other words, you know, I, I'm gonna be looking for things like accountability, you know, are they, are they people who have a reputation for being accountable? Are they, you know, do they have the capacity to make difficult decisions? Are they people who, who follow through? It would help, I think, and in my opinion, would really help to have some board experience. I don't necessarily know about the government experience per se. There are certain qualities that, you know, there are certain things that a person can learn and a certain thing, there's certain things that a person already has. And, but I think board experience is important because a board manager relationship, as we know from working in this environment, is very challenging. And it takes a certain kind of skill to be able to, to work in that environment. So I would look, I would look broadly at board experience, accountability, capacity to make difficult decisions, healthcare experience, I'm at this point definitely interested in healthcare experience.
And I would add, I'd make only one thing, since you've just now said healthcare experience, not just board experience, and this is difficult, I think, for us to evaluate, but capacity to think and act strategically.
Yeah.
There are board members who may understand the details of how building operations work or something like that, that's great. But I believe what our hospital needs and has needed for many years is a strategic understanding of the healthcare industry and where it's going and how we position ourselves so that we're sustainable, right? The board has adopted a strategic plan, I think it's pretty general, I think it was adopted in something of a rush to help convince us to keep the hospital county owned, and not only do I think it needs some serious flushing out, I think it hasn't been followed carefully. And so I'm looking for somebody who thinks strategically, I think that's the number one I need.
So in addition to that, I would just like to say that, I totally agree with that, but in addition to that strategic piece, I'd like to see vision. You know, we need to be envisioning what healthcare is gonna look like in Grant County for a long way into the future.
Yes.
Now, healthcare changes rapidly, but we need to have a vision in front of us about, you know, we're gonna have a lot of seniors to take care of, we are, you know, how are, it isn't just the hospital that is part of the healthcare system in Grant County, it's all of the independent providers as well. And, you know, so some, some real vision capacity combined with that strategic, you know, the strategic skill to get us to that vision, I think is critically important.
Well, I should too, just to add a little bit to what you're saying, I mean, we do have a rural hospital, this is Grant County, and adding that is, is having, you know, in my opinion, is having people to look at that, is our seniors, what is the future exactly? And what does Grant County need in the future? And reaching out to our seniors and providing some of these, you know, sort of best services that they can for them because it appears that, you know, Grant County's head at that point, that is our future. You know, the other piece that I'm not so much sold on is, yes, I understand, I do believe in having a working knowledge of some of the hospital, but to me, it's like, you know, people do presentations in front of you, you know, I learn a lot, it educates me, so I, I know that our trustees probably have that ability, you know, we have somebody in there that, that they can learn as they go, maybe it's not the time, but I sort of feel that, you want that piece of it, you know, there's a lot to consider, and everything that's been said up here, so it's not an easy process.
And I agree with all of you, it's absolutely critical.
But I, I, I want to mirror what you guys say, I really agree with Harry that, that the strategic plan, so that they're not buying by the seat of the pants.
Right.
Whatever comes up, you know, a definite way to lead the hospital. But Alicia, it is true that healthcare is very fluid, so we need to be able to make the changes, you know, as we can forecast them coming. So I, I'm very much in agreement. And becoming a senior myself, you know, I really agree with Chris, because I, I see healthcare becoming out of the reach of many seniors, you know, and, and then having to really choose, you know, between, you know, red, white, life-saving things and, and then going to the healthcare, so I agree with all that. Because I, I really foresee, my vision also for the hospital is to take care of some of our people and not make it a profit and loss issue, and make it a quality of life or necessity issue. Okay, so, thank you, and I'll, I'll be talking to him, oh, yes. What I know is I'm gonna talk to one of you guys before I do anything.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question, just to complicate things. I guess so the interviews will be done on the 18th, I'm wondering if any accommodation can be made for one of the potential interviewees who might be on vacation themselves? Hopefully that will come up, but hopefully they'll just all be available.
Do you think, do you know one in particular?
No.
Oh, no.
If that comes up.
It is the middle of summer.
If that comes up, hopefully we'll keep that in our thinking, something.
That's a good point.
I do think, though, that, you know, we could inform all of the candidates today of this schedule, which would, you know, give them a little heads up that it was coming so that if there was an issue with the 18th, we have a couple of weeks to work on it. So could we do that? Bernadette has informed all the candidates of this schedule today and that, just let them know that we'll have final interview schedule on the 9th, but they should know upfront that the interviews will be on the 18th.
Final interview schedule on the 9th? I didn't understand that.
Well, what I meant was, we'll know the final candidates, is what I should have said.
On the 9th, we'll be narrowing it.
On the 9th, we'll narrow it. And we have not yet discussed how many we're narrowing, too, so that's still out there.
That's correct.
But I agree, and I think, hopefully, we don't have to accommodate anyone, given that people make plane reservations more than two weeks in advance. If we do have to, you know, maybe the worst-case scenario is you miss some of them on the 23rd.
Right, and, and depending on how many that is, like some, it's kind of scary.
Right, so maybe it's one, we're hoping.
But maybe what I'll do too is, if it's agreeable to the rest of you, I'm willing to say that I would just have a one-on-one conversation with that person ahead of time.
Perfect.
So that if you do have to interview someone on the 23rd when I'm not here, I'm willing to at least have a one-on-one conversation with them. So I don't want to hold up the process either.
So we will narrow up to how many then?
My suggestion would be six, given that we have three.
That was gonna be my suggestion, too.
I'm fine with that.
Then we'll take half of the three.
And Bernadette? I was gonna ask if you could give me a paper copy instead of electronic, because I'm very old school.
So I, I would like a paper copy as well, I'd, you know, I'd like to, like, write no one's name.
Paper copy of what?
If you don't mind, just give us a packet with, just make us a packet with all the resumes.
Except for Harry.
Our copies.
They're not what?
Eighty-four words.
You can have your eighty-four papers.
Eighty-four, I need four.
Yeah, I got a key that I can kill at my house and give you a paper.
So, would you review, one more time?
Okay, so the first one that's right on top, we're gonna narrow down to six, okay? So if we can have our rankings in for, yeah, this to Bernadette by 3:00 PM on July 8th, and then on July 9th, we'll have a special meeting prior to the work session for any discussion as far as what we're looking at, right, correct? The position and...
And to narrow it to the final six.
And to narrow it to the final six, and then we'll go on to our work session. And then on July 18th, we're hoping to interview the six that have been selected for the interview process. And then on July 25th, 2019, they will be, action will be taken on the six, narrow it down to the three, that will be a point into the board and trustees.
So are we gonna meet then at nine o'clock on the 18th?
For the interviews? Yes.
Yes.
There was a lot of sound.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if you could put that down on a D-mann?
Oh, this is an IT guy.
Well, that's just one piece of information, you know, that I can handle.
I can, I can do that.
Probably not a bad idea to send that to all of us.
Okay. If I remember accurately, we can have it.
The one more piece of information, I think, is, just to be clear, we rank all the candidates from top to bottom, so there's 11, 12, how many is it?
Eleven.
So we'll, we'll rank all of them, one through 11, and just to be clear.
Glad you looked at that. Okay.
Okay, and then for the...
We don't have the same problem for the next two.
No, we don't.
Mr. Chairman, this is moving on with business. Just got a little ball through here, but I am at G and H. We solicit applicants for Rogers Tax Shooting Range to apply to advisory board, a pure consumer position, and receive no applicants, so we will advertise those again. I had some conversation with the chair of the Rogers Tax Shooting Range Advisory Board to try and solicit some sort of interest, I thought we had interest in both, but turned out.
But I did, sorry.
No, I'm just wondering for the, if the Rogers Tax hard work and an elected official, would that be possible? That was on the process of applying for that, but I didn't really feel it was possible because being an elected official.
Sitting on the Economic Development Infrastructure Policy Committee and a lot of other committees, I was just wondering if it'd be okay for elected official could apply for that.
I would have to look at the I R O S to see if there's something that says you could not, but I'm, I'm not even aware of. Oh, no conflict is jumping out at me, but maybe we have to sit down and...
I thank you very much.
... potential things, because it's not a board of reporters.
Yeah, I can't imagine my parents talking to themselves.
Yeah, because I would be interested, but thank you very much, I really appreciate that, sorry that Mr. Chairman won't remember.
That's an inherently conflicted position anyway, everybody who's on it has an interest in Rogers Tax.
So what I'm hearing would be F G and H that we table, these are...
There's, there's no option to be taken, so we're gonna advertise them again, and then we'll put it on the future agenda.
So I, I have a couple things I want to just mention or talk through on this, so I did speak with, now his name escapes me, is Bob from, who is the pure, consumer, pure person on the Tucasa board? Bob, is his name Bob, Mike?
Sorry.
The, the consumer applicant on the Tucasa board, what is his name? I think it's Bob, Bob or Bill, I don't remember, anyway, I spoke with him in the grocery store on Saturday, and he said that if no one applied, he was willing to re-up. But he does serve as, he has other obligations, and so if we could find somebody he would turn up to, but if we needed him, he would do it. So that's one thing. And then the other thing I wanted to just, I don't know if this is a discussion or a comment or what it is exactly, but I was struck by the fact that we have openings on three different boards and no applicants. And so I guess my first question is, is this something that we're posting on our Facebook page?
It's on our website, it's on our Facebook page, it's displayed on the newspaper.
Wow.
I don't, nowhere else to put it.
So I just think, you know, I'm, I'm just making comment here, I don't know what to do about this, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but, and part of my thinking on this was struck by an email I got in the last couple of days about how many of these types of board positions are open at the state level right now, there's like dozens. And so there's some thing about, you know, why don't people want to serve on these boards?
Citizens have difficulty filling their positions as well.
These are, you know, these are actually really important decision-making boards. So, like I said, I don't know where I'm really going with this, but for all of those of you out there watching in TV land and all across the county, these are important, and we would really appreciate you considering this as part of your civic duty as a resident of Grant County, and please apply to these boards, we would really appreciate it.
Who posts those on Facebook, on... Yeah, okay. So do you know, is that shareable? So could, say a commissioner share that on Grant County information or some other side of...
We could start listing it on those as well.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure if it'd any good, but maybe.
Right, we just, we need to reach the people that are being reached, and we need to encourage the people that are being reached and look at it and go, ooh, I'm not feeling that.
If, if it was shareable, a commissioner or any citizen, anybody here, might know somebody that has shooting interest and just private message it to somebody or something, I don't know, if that's possible.
I'll check with Ken, I know I can share it because an administrator's law on the page, but I don't know what would be possible to do.
So would it be possible, I'm, I'm addressing this specifically to the Shooting Range Advisory Board, but you know, shooting sports are the biggest thing happening at 4-H. Is it possible that this could be filmed by a 4-H senior in high school or something like that? I mean, I realize that they're probably for three-year terms, but, I mean, that, there's gotta be a way for that to fit in with what kids are doing in 4-H. Shooting sports is huge, so it might be worth a conversation with Judy about whether she has a student that might be interested in a one-year term. The other thought might be, is maybe directly, so I'm totally thinking out loud here, as we're sitting here, but maybe contacting the social work department and the nursing department at the university about the Tucasa opening, and then maybe, not, I'm not saying this because I don't want role to, you know, anybody else who's interested in Rogers Tax or economic development, you know, specifically ask, like, somebody in the business department at the university, something like that?
No, absolutely.
Thoughts?
Any other comments or questions on those items? Moving on to agreements, I require consideration of a agreement statement, a 26 professional services agreement between the Grant County DWI program and Chris Albert, doing business at Recovery Management Center. I don't have a spot. I'm sorry. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, this is the chair. The item up for consideration is for the fiscal year 20, I'm sorry, treatment, treatment, for treatment services for the DWI and misdemeanor compliance probationers with, again, Recovery Management Center. We currently have the contract with them for treatment services, and this is just for next year's services. I stand for any questions.
I do, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
What's the difference between what happens here in recovery management... What's the difference between what happens here in Recovery Management Center and what happens at Tu Casa?
What's the difference? There's no difference. Recovery Management, again, the grant requires that 65% of the whole entire money be spent on treatment services. So in order to help that process, most counties do do some treatment services. We try, we donate, not everybody, all of our clients are on Medicaid, have private insurance and that, so this helps those people get the treatment services that they need without having the whole, you know, having to pay for a whole lot of it out of pocket. That's the only difference. It's, there's, there's still group services, individual services, they are the same. And as I said last time, we did lower that amount for Recovery Management because more of our clients are eligible for Medicaid, which Tu Casa can bill for, and I believe Recovery Management can't at this moment.
So when you say lower your amount, you mean you lower your estimated number of-
Last year, our contract amount was for $45,000, and remember in our last, the last county commission meeting, we had had to readjust the budget due to cuts. And so the planning council voted to cut $10,000 from treatment services due to a lot of them being eligible for Medicaid. So we cut there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, excuse me, so could a person, let's say a private paid person, go to Tu Casa and do the detox piece? And then go to Recovery Management for services?
Yes.
Or does, okay, so does Recovery Management offer the detox, the social detox? They don't?
No.
They're not licensed to do it?
No, they don't.
Okay, all right.
As long as they're not going to both places at the same time for the exact same treatment services, neither one will accept them if they're going to the other at the same time.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Henry.
I would take consideration of agreement A 1927, grant agreement between the Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division for fiscal year 2020 E 911 Act Grant Program Grant. This grant is for a little over $500,000. And this is to purchase new hardware and software and dispatch equipment. We want PCs, phones, headsets, and software to bring this dispatch center up to what is called Next Generation 911. And so it'll also mesh with the new CAT system that we're looking to implement at dispatch. So that's what that's for, and it's through the 911 funding.
So this is, this resolution is just telling you to apply for it?
No, this is the grant agreement except for-
So it's a grant agreement, so we've got the money, we just need to agree to take it.
We need to, yes, I'm saying yes, we want the money.
And then this is part of your bigger process to address the fact that the 911 and dispatch is very, very, very old. Nice job on the $500,000.
I will pass that on. Any other questions?
I would take consideration of agreement A 1928, professional services agreement between the Sixth Judicial District Court Pre-Call Services Division and Lisa Farado. This is an amount of $22,500, not to exceed grant. This is for pre-call services that was presented to you at the beginning of last month. That county permits funding for this, that's why the agreement is the first.
Questions? Item L, consideration of agreement A 1929, working financial plan between Grant County and United States Department of Agriculture Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, otherwise known as AIS. This is, and the contract, Mr. Price spoke of earlier.
I have one item on that to contribute, this is from my fellow commissioners, consideration when we discuss this contract on Thursday. Last year, I believe the year before, I argued that we should stick with non-lethal methods. And I haven't heard anything to change my opinion on that. Mr. Price referred to the fact that people believe that lethal methods just don't work, and he said something memorable, which is if lethal didn't work, you didn't kill enough of them. To me, that's the wrong attitude. In a certain way, it comes to coyotes, you would, you have to exterminate them. You'd have to do what we tried to do with the wolf, what we did with the wolf. Because the way they respond biologically to a reduction in population is to produce more pups. It's been pretty well established. But the biggest reason that I'm in favor of non-lethal methods is the potential for harming Grant County residents from the traps that have been set to kill coyotes in particular. And this was brought anew to my attention at this month's meeting of the Search and Rescue, Grant County Search and Rescue, which I'm a member. We always do after-action reports at those meetings, and we had four actions to review. Two of those actions occurred on ranch lands, one of private ranch and one public lands, Obama. And the incident commanders, actually there's one person in both cases, the same woman, had her job greatly complicated when she was informed that in both cases there were M44 canisters out there that our searchers were gonna have to be aware of. And this startled her, and it reminded me that I still consider this a fairly barbaric and indiscriminate use of what should be scientifically-based animal control methods. I'm in favor of using this money to help our county. As has been pointed out, this is not Grant County tax money, this is federal fees that are collected. I don't want to reject all the money, but I also don't want it used in ways that are gonna harm our pet dogs and potentially our residents, including our searchers on search and rescue. So that was my additional pitch. It hadn't occurred to me before that this was a hazard that I might encounter going out on a mission until this last meeting.
Do we have any say-so or sitting down with them and explaining those concerns? Or is it, and I'm just asking because this is, I mean, I've heard it here, maybe that's a meeting and different signs, but, you know, I, yeah, I agree with some of the methods that are, I disagree with some of the methods that are used. I just don't know if that was last resort, but what it is. But is there any way to sit down with them and actually speak to them and say, you know, what? Or maybe it's just from my knowledge, just to what's your last, I know what the last resort is, but what steps do you take before your last resort is?
I can attend to have that conversation with Mr. Farado. I believe this, everything that comes from low above his head, I'm not sure if it would go to walking out. I think we've heard time and time again, in my experience with these contracts in the past, lethal was the last method that they used. There were very well-trained individuals who, you know, tried to remove these species at all measures prior to taking lethal action. That's not the first thing they do. I've dealt with these contracts for many, many years, I've never encountered that. Nor have I encountered that with Mr. Jones since I've been here, conversations, I've had with him personally. I've been very willing to have that conversation with Mr. Farah, I will try calling him this afternoon. He's very difficult to-
He's on vacation, that's why he wasn't here.
Well, that's right, he's, no, I can't have that conversation prior to Thursday. I can have that conversation with Brandon and get his input on when to use those methods and what potential situations. I think it's going to depend on what he encounters too. Now, because a cross, a rabid fox coming at him, I believe he's probably gonna take lethal action. I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking of different-
Just to be clear, I would consider that reasonable. So however we phrase it, I certainly wouldn't want to eliminate his ability to do that.
So I will have to, I'll have that conversation with him before Thursday. He's really not comfortable coming in, speaking in public, so I don't think he's gonna feel comfortable standing in front of you, but I can have that conversation with him. He has no authority to say what's in there, if he wants or not.
Just to say that, you know, we've heard it time and time again, and I haven't heard it time and time again. You know, I mean, this is the first time that I, this has come up in front of me, the presentation, and I have asked questions, and, you know, I'm not saying, yeah, it is, what is the last thing? And, you know, all the risks that is a little concerning to me sometimes.
Well, I shouldn't have said we, I, but I will have that conversation with him and see if that can get somebody's assurance as to what situations does he encounter that he would utilize that? And what other methods does he use in some different scenarios? Because I think it's just gonna depend on the situation, is what I anticipate as being. I will come up between now and this morning.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I think lethal as a last resort, but sometimes lethal's the only resort. I'm trying to think of several issues, like the pigeon problem that I'm familiar with. The manager of the apartment complex wanted to trap and relocate those pigeons, and he was advised by Brandon, who met with him there, that they're homing pigeons, you can relocate them Arizona, and they'll be back right here in the same nest. And so unfortunately, and he had had a complaint about smell inside by one of his tenants. So he, he didn't want to kill pigeons, but he's actually trapping some pigeons and gonna dispose of them because they'll come back, and he's afraid that one of those tenants is gonna get sick. So I think that's, as a last measure, certainly, but, you know, I don't know what you do with a homeowner overrun by squirrels either, and they're chewing up the orange. I've heard that from several rural residents. And then there's also the concern, I think Wildlife Services saves more lives than we give them credit for in some of the things they do, lives of animals. There's an incident I heard out west of town where they decided Wildlife Services wasn't gonna quite get the job done. And so they got a trapper to come in, and I think he, I think he killed a lot more animals than Wildlife Services were just because somebody's chickens were getting looked at by a mountain lion. And, you know, I think, I know that Wildlife Services has saved enough. I know before they killed one lion, they had to get game and fish out there and give, actually make a request to kill a lion, then we're just gonna go kill a certain mountain lion or something. I think also, if you look at the populations of bears and lions and some other species being up as high as they are around here compared to years past, I think they're, those populations are actually flourishing compared to 30 years ago. And I think that's partly because we have Wildlife Services to take care of. Another thing is, I was told by Mr. Farah some time ago that, I think it was Eddie County, decided they could have a couple of their deputies handle these problems. And they're just not trained for that. They're trained for what they're trained for. And it was a total disaster, and then they, they couldn't get back into the program for some reason. Anyhow, there's a lot of complications that we don't understand, but I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chair, the one thing that always comes up is the salary that we're, you know, states, that one resident takes an enormous salary that we're paying for that. And I just don't see that probably being true.
Well, he's not, he's not an employee of the county, so he works for USDA.
Yes.
And, yeah, and I think Mr. Price covered that pretty well with the amount of hours he gets paid, he works and what he gets paid. So his salary is paid by the federal government, we just contract with him, and then he works what, how many hours?
Twenty-one forty-seven, I think.
That breakdown's actually in the agreement.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a couple of comments. One is, do you know how the woodpecker issue was, so I had these questions for Mr. Price, and then they fell off my head and never back. Do you know how the woodpecker issue was resolved?
The one at the fire department has not been resolved because the damage was done. So I talked to Brandon personally about that, because I was interested in it.
And is that, is that a new building?
It's the new building.
Building that we're building out at Ellis Mesa or built out of Ellis Mesa?
It hasn't been resolved because by the time it was reported to him, he made five trips up there and can see no signs of woodpeckers. So they, it's, the damage was done in the past, and until somebody gets up there to Ellis Mesa, which is a long ways, that's a problem, you know, that would show, and actually sees the woodpeckers doing damage. Then at that point, he could get up there and do something. The one of the elderly lady in town, Mr. Farah is the one that told me about that, and I don't know how she reported that, that they did take care of it. I think there was more than one woodpecker, and she was really grateful for that.
Well, I ask because, you know, as Mr. Price said, it falls under the migratory bird thing, you gotta get a permit. You know, I just was wondering if they did with the birds, because he did say something, and this is sort of a segue into my next comment. You know, he was talking about the fact that when you don't have someone like Wildlife Services to provide the services, that the problem doesn't go away until people take it into their own hands. And, you know, he was talking about other animals getting poisoned because people are leaving poisoned animals laying around and that sort of stuff. And so what that, the question that that brought up for me is, if Wildlife Services has to use poison on pigeons, for example, they're gonna use poison to get rid of pigeons. What happens? How is that mess cleaned up? And so obviously, if there are predators that eat the dead pigeons, then we have a problem with poisoning the predators. And so do we know what happens to the animals that they lethally take care of?
I know in the case I'm familiar with, the pigeons aren't, they don't use poison because the poison, that's what a vigilante resident might do. The poison could be carried in through the air conditioning system also. The poison could also get in the pigeon's system. A pigeon would go out in the field and die and then be eaten by a raptor.
Right, yeah.
So they trapped the pigeons and then killed them.
So they don't use poison on pigeons at all?
Well, not in the case, not in the case I'm familiar with.
Nor in the case, they, this particular, when I was in the other county, we had a terrible pigeon problem. We subused this pride at our courthouse, and they helped us with that, and they trapped them, they did not poison them. What they did with them after that, I'm not sure, but they did not poison them. Well, that's simple fact, that you have the poison being taken in through the ventilation system. You have dead birds, you have the-
Dead raptors.
So, right.
Okay.
And he used that example of gopher bait, and actually, it's probably been 20 years ago, but I remember somebody telling me, yeah, just put gopher bait up there on your roof. And I thought, okay, that's a good idea. I did not do that.
Right.
Because it was in town, but it sounded like a good idea.
Well, I think, you know, the challenge on this for me is that I really, really don't want to use lethal methods. I don't like the idea of cyanide, I don't like the idea of trapping. And yet, I also think that, you know, we live in a place where we have to coexist with other creatures. And sometimes the coexistence of those other creatures is a little scarce. And, you know, I'm a big cyclist, and I worry all the time about deer and rabbits. You know, if I hit a deer, it could kill me when I'm going downhill at 35 miles an hour on my bike. And, you know, people, I see people all the time feeding the deer. And, you know, so that's, that is an issue that I think we have to, you know, somehow, there has to be some education about coexisting with some of these animals. And one of them is finding ways to not make the problem worse by feeding them or, you know, that sort of stuff. So it's really a tough issue for me because I see that in order to close this with some of these things, you know, we can't have pigeons in the air conditioning system and things like that, and yet, what do you do with them? This is a tough, this is a tough one for me.
Mr. Chair, one of the last comments, I suspect. First, just to address the salary question, I think the fact that a resident is raising that doesn't mean it's influencing us. I think that points as a red herring. I'm not persuaded at all that we should worry about this contract or salary. That's somebody else's business. I am focused on what we allow to happen within Grant County, right? That's our job, is to protect residents of Grant County. This has been a good conversation. I rarely think of birds when I think about Wildlife Services. I think that going on account- I think the Doniana County just a few months ago passed a resolution about their contract. It was a very similar contract with Wildlife Services AFIS, in which they banned the use specifically of N-44 cyanide capsules and legal traps. I believe those were the two things they banned. To me, that leaves open a huge range of options for a professional like Mr. Jones. Entirely leaves open how you deal with birds because they're not the targets of either of those methods. And I'll, I'll look into the language that was used in Doniana and see if, if we can do that here. Those are the things that have been the focus of my ire about this contract. I just think they're completely ineffective and actually dangerous, despite the professionalism of the, of the people who set them. So just to let you know, I'll bring it on Thursday, what I can find out about the Doniana County resolution.
You know, I think looking at all this, it's, you know, it's a big plus to me if it's out there that the service is available because once people start taking these on their own hands, into their own hands, I mean, that could definitely not be a big thing for, for anyone. So that's a big plus that I see in this. I mean, I'm just, you know, questioning some of that sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think actually, basically, we all agree that it's a, it's a good service. And I do think we understand that, as Harry said, that the salary thing is the red herring. Because it's not catchy money. It's money that capital producers have paid through their rental fees that is part of the county as a pass through from the feds.
It's just that the information that's put out there makes it, you know, seem that that's what we're endorsing, that's what we're doing, you know?
A lot of it is that they're protecting their business, their business.
I'm sorry, who's protecting their business?
Well, the capital providers and the services do help them because they do run their business.
Thank you, Charlie.
I am M. Consideration of Agreement 81930, Memorandum of Agreement between the County of Grant and Villas de Santa Clara for Road and Program Projects. This is an MOA for Earl to do just so work for Villas de Santa Clara. Very similar to what he does for Bear and Towns and City.
I assume that in that agreement, we've taken into account for the higher oil prices?
Well, it's their, we're just utilizing their LGRF monies. We just do the work for them, so they just pass that money through to us. They actually purchase the product, they purchase the product, we, they pay us for them.
I have a question. Sorry to just keep ragging this committee on, but I should ask Earl privately. So oil prices are coming down. Is it, but the price of the products, is that sticky? Does that stay up for a long time in your experience?
Yeah, it's probably there till next March.
Okay. So the oil prices come down, but the price has contracted, it stays up. Oh, okay, thank you.
Speaking of LGRF, Charlene, would you tell the commission what you told me last week at MMAC about how that money's going to be, just how, what it looks like and what it really is?
With the supplemental?
With the supplemental?
Right, so it was a misunderstanding, I think, on my part as well as many others. So we should see an increase in our LGRF funding over the next three years as a result of the legislation that was passed increasing the motor vehicle tax price tax, which they will, they have earmarked a portion of that go towards LGRF credits. So we should see an increase in the, in the next three years as a result of the DOTS tax increase. That is what the county secretary stated in a workshop that we attended last week.
You mean over the next three years, correct? Not sometime in the next?
Right, over the next three years. So it comes into, it goes into effect July 1. So the motor vehicle, motor vehicle tax increases July 1. Then once that money comes in, that will be the issue, but we would see that increase over the course of the next three years. So that was encouraging news. The one tying appropriation of the 50 million are really not so. I'm a little disheartened now, listening to the number of projects that have been submitted. There's some, there's some information out there as whether or not the state's actually going to get their hands on that. And it was, it was explained that that was the local government. So we'll see that happens with that proportion of getting that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, wow, that is going to be a highly competitive grant process. There'll be thousands of.
Oh, there is, there is. And so we're anxiously waiting to see if we get any of that. Any other questions? I am M. Consideration of Agreement 81931, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County Continuum Youth Services and Gary Staley. I'm just going to tuck all three of these together because it's all in one grant. Consideration of Agreement 81932, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County Continuum Youth Services and James Grant. Consideration of Agreement 81933, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County and Villas de Santa Clara. All three of these agreements are funded through the Juvenile Justice Grants that we get from CYFD each year. Gary Staley does the restorative justice piece of that grant. The community youth building does a lot of stuff that you see downtown with the youth. Does a lot of work at the landfill with recycling over the course of the years. At least I can speak to, these are the youth that do a lot of work at the volunteer center. So that's the program that he runs through that grant. Mr. Grant does the, we call it the JPO school. It's the day recording lab component of this grant that kids who are suspended from school can continue to, they attend this even though they're suspended from school, so they don't fall behind in school. So that's another component of our grant.
Is that actually for kids that have been expelled?
Well, it's, it's both. So, and so we, that's also the way I understand it. Also, if they've been expelled, that the schools participate, silver school participates in this as well. Somehow it allows them, because yourselves is probably speak more intelligently to this, allow them to keep their allotment for, they're still enrolled somehow. I don't know how that works, but anyway, that component, that's the portion that he does on the grant. And then of course, Bianca is our Juvenile Justice Coordinator and that is also grant funded. And that contract is for her services to administer that program. Any questions on those? All grant funded.
Is that, so is the JPO school now at the high school since they moved out of, since the opportunity school building is now the pre-K?
They're actually looking at possibly re, talking about the relocation of what they're going to do with that. So she's working through, sorting through that.
Yes, sir.
That's what I mean. It's been at, the CYFD office in the past, and so they're looking at, there's a portable building that the town Silver City has and just determining what's the proper location to put that, that's most convenient for the students as well as to maximize services and keep the cost down. That is a little of the area where everyone will end up.
I can't imagine it's easy for students to get out to the CYFD building.
That's kind of part of the issue, so it's a transportation issue, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, for Charlene, and I apologize, sometimes it's the case you give a little information and you invite more questions. I think I've, you know, I've approved several of these agreements with Mr. Graham without it having occurred to me that I don't understand why the county is contracting for the service if it's a school district that's getting the attendance from it.
Because it's our grant. It's, it's Grant County's grant with the state and the next county to do this program, Juvenile Justice Continuum. So it's part of that grant. So it's just a part of it. It's many, many years of research saying, if you keep these kids engaged in school, you keep them, it keeps them out of trouble. So what you're trying to do is you're trying to keep all of these kids from ending up in detention. This is just one of those avenues to be able to do that. And it is one of the components of our grant. It's the county's grant with the state to provide these services. Yes, because it benefits the schools, but then again, it also certainly benefits our budget because we're not paying for these children to be incarcerated at $275 a night. So it's part of that big continuum grant. That's why it's with us.
So that grant has multiple things in it that the district couldn't just apply for that money on their own because it's a piece of the bigger.
Right, and so part of that is there's a lot of, there's a lot of in-kind services that go into this grant. And so some of, we use, we are able to utilize some of their, you know, whether it's space, people, just that we use some of our labor buildings, et cetera, for the in-kind match to go along with that.
It certainly answers all the intelligent questions I can ask now. Thank you.
Living on resolutions, consideration of resolution R1944, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the nearest financial authority for a question of the purchase of a computer aided dispatch authority on CAD system upgrade. This is for regional dispatch because, this means the fiscal region for the dispatch authority, BMFA requires the county to approve this resolution authorizing the submission of an application for a financial authority loan to purchase, to finance the purchase of the CAD system. And the guaranteed revenue source for this will be the increment of GRT that funds the regional dispatch authority.
I am R. Consideration of Resolution R1946, amending the approved adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, for county purpose and the county of Grant, focusing on transferring and appropriating funds thereof, is a really long way of saying this is a budget adjustment resolution, I think.
Yes, in fact, you do have the resolution that Living has projected for a budget adjustment. And to break it down a little bit, there was an increase of cash on hand for, for the volunteer fire departments, throwing 452,744 dollars and 96 cents. There was an increase for $20,000 for the first quarter community stepping up grant and $1,000 for the in-the-air program. An increase of $8,47,000 for the 2019 series bond proceeds. We have one, three capital appropriations, $200,000 for the parking lot renovations, $115,000 for the sheriff's office vehicles, and $200,000 for the admin roof renovations. There was an increase of $200 for the TIP, which is the tax incremental funding. A transfer of $16,500 from the general to the north burly sewer system, and that was for the lift station maintenance. An increase of $20,000 for the airport fund, this is an airport maintenance grant. And an increase of $204,000 for the terminal building renovation. And an increase of $3,000 for the chipper, they're listing it as an Arizona chipper.
On the capital improvements, $8 million, we just have to put that in even though we haven't spent it?
Any questions?
Questions? Did we, I thought we were, I guess I can't remember. Did we sold all 8 million at once? We were going to spread that out with two tranches?
We were going to, but when we looked at what the IRS regulations were and the way that we were going to spend it, it didn't make any sense to, it basically worked out the same.
Okay. There's some financial advantage to that, to doing it this way, correct?
Right, there would have been some extra charges that we would have incurred having done it into.
That we're going to, in the interest that we have to pay on the stuff that we're not using right now. Okay, I think we remembered that discussion. Thank you.
So that 8 million dollars is in the bank, correct? In the county bank, whatever bank it is? Bank? And we can't, we can't earn interest on that money, is that correct?
That's my understanding, but that's a question for Steve as to what he's doing with that. It's my understanding, no.
Okay, I just seem to remember La.
Who are they?
LaLea talking about the fact that we couldn't do that. But that's, you know, even in a savings account, you could earn a fair amount of money out of 8 million bucks.
I believe there's some regulations saying that you cannot do that, but I can't speak intelligently and I've never seen it invested.
I'll ask Steve first.
Any other questions on that one? Next is the healthcare claims. We'd like to tail that till July, that came out last week, when everybody that may have been out of town. And then they've walked in their request for denial of those, and so I just thought of all that. So just prefer to tail that till the first, to meet them in July. Not concluded.
So we will get recess then as the, as the claims work? Or sorry?
We'll still be reviewing whatever timeframe we are supposed to be reversing this cost. I would hate to be out of compliance every month.
Stay compliant, we'll be out of compliance.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so. But in that, Commissioner, Commissioner Sonoski, in the board.
Yeah, a couple of things. One of the things that I met with Mandica, whatever, our forest service, Wondolanta Forest Service.
Oh, the Nalka.
And, you know, they're very receptive to do things now with the economy. They're very receptive to have some sort of plans to do cooperatives that will increase the use of the forest. They're very receptive to doing something with the trails. He even foresaw that, you know, it would be possible to have trails running from Silver City to the mining area that could be used. The problems are that we have nobody to coordinate this. So planting a seed, that's where I think that we might really be able to use somebody that was in a parks and recreation position to help coordinate, you know, things like this. Because honestly, that forest is going to be there forever. And for us to diversify our economy, that is a great possibility. So instead of trying to rid our economy of some of, you know, especially the motorized travel, because that's the one that gets the biggest need, you know, embrace it, control it, and have it, you know, so it's done safely and it's not intrusive to the forest service. So he, he's really willing to, to work for this this time. And I think we ought to be, ought to take advantage of that. Okay, the other thing is that we did visit the town park and looked at the area where we might be doing, you know, the ramp and, and a parking area. And this is going to be very possible. So, so they, they should be giving us some information on that. And the third thing that I wanted to bring up is that I don't want, when we're talking about having the job descriptions, current job descriptions, you know, and we were going to be working on it, but I don't want that to just die out. I want to make sure that we continue to do that because again, I want to see if we can put forth something that, that, and maybe Abby can, well, she's, do we have, what kind of action do we need to take to say that the county will look at in-house first for job postings? So I just want to put that in, in there to see so that we, we do take whatever actions necessary and we do address, you know, at, at least also having the current job descriptions. And that's all for me.
I only want to say to the first part of what Abby said, this conversation with Mr. Mandoka, Superintendent Mandoka, amen. Thank you.
I'll save mine for Thursday.
Yeah, I'll save mine for Thursday.
You know, I wanted to, I'll see most of mine for Thursday also, but with my mom passing away on the 16th, I don't know if they call it counting, and just the great cars, phone calls that I got, you know, that makes it a little easier, if you know what I mean. I understand what I'm trying to say, but I really appreciate, I appreciate the commissioners and, you know, that, what's going on with services and elected officials and the public too, that it was great, and the phone calls and cars and everything that it got, you know, being a. You know, being a new county commissioner, I really felt at home with, you know, with what the county staff did, and I really want to thank you all. I, I appreciate that, I know that the last meeting I was here, I was probably struggling through it, but, you know, I appreciate that, and the sheriff's office too for beautiful support, everything that, that happened, and it did make it easier on me and my family, and I can't say enough thanks, and I appreciate that, and I really want to thank all of you. And if you can, you know, I won't be sending a thank you card, but if you can pass that on to all your, your employees, it was fantastic, and again, thank you. I'll save the rest for Thursday. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Chair, we'll be there in this work session.
We have a motion.
I have a second.
Second, discussion, always a favor.
I have.